We must be okay. So again, you know, and I do want to point out that as we move forward in this process, since I'm getting to talk until I get to do this, that I think we have to be appreciative of the fact that we have a developer who has the capability and the merwit ball to do this. Connie is a respected member of the real estate community. I think that she has the financial chops and the will of the force to be able to make something happen. And that it is her intention, in my conversations with her, to include Gerwood in this walk down Walton Hills path. And if we are unable to work with this developer, my concern for the community is that we will end up with someone like Baylehe or somebody that's going to come in here and say, we'll just buy the mountain and we'll do all the development and we'll bring our team of attorneys. And Gerwood, you're really kind of out of luck. Because if we can find, if we can have a good partner like CY Investments and improve our relationship with the land bank, that is a win for sure. And with that, we have the document up for review. We don't have any hard copies of this now. Do you want to lead us through it so I can talk?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the introduction is just some context and coming out of the committee listening sessions, things that we have heard, as well as some responses from a survey that Brooke did over the summer of current renters in Gerwood. And then the last set of bullet points were the really key goals that we came up with, to increase the supply of workforce housing, to increase the affordability of housing in Gerwood, to increase the amount of housing occupied by Gerwood residents, and to decrease the housing being used as a short-term rental property. The section around accountability to the RFP and RFP response is inserting language that was included in both of those documents and asking that it be binding.
And that's further down the page, Ryan?
Yes. Yep. And none of those sections had any significant edits from the committee meeting in the last hour, which is why I'm kind of glossing both of them. So then on the back page, backup binding commitments with revisions to development agreements are six asks that we've spent quite a lot of time discussing. Each one of those has a specific goal behind it, only which is really try and figure out the mechanism best to achieve those goals. The first ask is asking HLP to restructure its profit share, the current development agreement, and talks about a 50-50 share of profits between CY and HLP, which in the opinion of Brooke Chandler is rather vague. But essentially, what we were asking is HLP to restructure a share of profits to give Gerwood land. And we were trying to figure out how to phrase that in a way that leads to some conversation, but ultimately on the mechanism that we would like some land on phase one and phase two. The number two deed restrictions, we had a long conversation that a couple of you got to hear part of, about deed restrictions to increase primary residences and to limit the growth of negative rentals in our community. Number three is we would like some cash upfronts to help get started in the community's efforts to build some workforce and affordable housing. Number four is very simply a mechanism to ensure that housing is built on land and rather than land being bought and held as an investment. Number five, increasing transparency. We want them to keep talking to us. But we would also like to see redacted copies of the RFP response, as well as a initial project budget, which is stipulated in the signed development agreement that that comes out. And then finally, number six is we want to increase the density and the more increase in the burn with the family lots in phases one and two. So that's where we're at currently. And the most current text is what's up on the screen.
So they've changed.
Yeah, yeah, those changes are reflected on the screen.
And number two was the one you guys that we really struggled with, was how to address the nightly rentals situation, realizing that, you know, thanks to the board supervisors' effort and working with the assembly, we have the new ADU ordinance that's in place for Gerwood. And that's a wonderful thing, and that it makes us evolve beyond that before we're completion, completing this. But trying to figure out how we include that in our asks as far as either a deed restriction or a total number of units that would be excluded from being nightly rentals. We discussed everything from saying that rentals will be, all rentals will be 30 days or longer, to it will be only primary residences within ADU would be allowed to have nightly runs, and lots of things in between. So we welcome the board supervisors' input into the, how they'd like to see this document changed, if any, and any other ideas that you might have.
Thank you very much for that introduction and thorough explanation, Nico, on behalf of the whole committee. I would, I guess, start from the very beginning so we can talk it through in order of the presentation. And personally, just for the top, we would just insert the date of whenever this was finalized, and then before your 21st meeting, for sure, because I'm sure things will change or could change before then. So if anyone on the board would like to speak in the introduction sentences, any comments?
What I could add to that is that we did tell, Connie had asked if we would please share the working document with her once we have it finalized with board supervisors' approval. And realizing that all of this is public information, I do, my hope is that the board will be able to approve a revised draft, and that we can forward it to Rick or to Connie, and so that they'll have time to consider it before we can.
Thank you, Sam. So we could say revise each time. Nico, on your date, number vision, when do you share it with everybody?
Yeah. Yeah, one question, one suggestion. In the very, in the introduction, can we, can we point out that the RFP was about residential housing? And then that ties to ask number four. So the whole purpose of the RFP was housing, and the development agreement is to do a land sale. So ask number four is about actually turning the, you know, the agreement to, into something that will produce housing. So I think where there's an acknowledgement in that paragraph, we could just put something explicitly in there about, you know, the purpose of the RFP and the whole, the whole exercise we've reviewed to produce housing, housing units.
Nico's going to work on that.
I have a question. Does the RFP response have a known date? And they'll just know what that means, because it's referred to ever throughout the document, page 17.
The response from the developer and the land bank? We don't really have, we don't have anything but a date that we've agreed to make if we can.
May 30th, 2021 is the date of the cover letter on it.
It is titled the RFP response.
At the bottom of that first paragraph?
Like if they-
I just pulled up their RFP response that they submitted to HLP.
I think we'd refer to it as the, as the recommended RFP or the one, the proposal that was accepted.
Okay, the accepted RFP?
I don't remember what it said, but whatever it said, it's the same committee.
Okay.
Okay, so that last sentence would be known and acknowledged as the, I just want to help Nico with the wording. RFP acknowledgement, is that what you called it, Mike?
I can't remember what it's actually referred to on the HLP side. It was a, it was a proposal that was selected by the, it was selected by the selection committee. And then it had some status, and it's given some name.
I think they refer to it as a memo.
Yeah, we could refer to it as a memo. There was a memo published by Robin when the RFP was chosen.
So the document of this is based on, was the published response, which is why I called it the RFP response.
Yeah, but it has, it's not just, there was two responses, so it just, we probably don't need to go too far down. Perhaps we could ask, perhaps we could ask staff to come up with the right term for that. It's whatever it, the thing that was selected by the selection committee.
Recommended proposal, because RFP is a request for proposals, so recommended proposal by the selection committee, something along those lines.
Right, approved, winning, approximately?
We can find it on the HLP side, I just don't have it front.
The CY Palmeroye-Sanderson RFP response. But that's what it is.
Yeah, well, this is kind of a clerical thing, we'll just, we'll just fix it with a name that's-
Okay.
Insert, they titled it, it's glued throughout. And maybe if it needs a date, because they have different versions on their computers, they, I don't know, it's on page 17.
Okay.
And I like how, how simple the opening sentence is, but it's not a brand new thing. We have been experiencing it for months and months and months, but it's fair to start out like that. But if we wanted to say an ongoing housing crisis, this would be a very elementary way or word to insert. Any comments from Guy or Jennifer to see if your unmute will work for the introduction?
I like ongoing.
Oh, thanks.
An ongoing housing crisis, very cool.
Either Guy or-
There's a lot of weight put on this survey, you know, but it's good, I like it, 119 responses with renters. I guess we don't have any of that kind of hard or quantitative information from the community itself. No numbers or way to kind of quantify the community's thoughts, other than we all agree that we need that digital housing, or that.
You do have the Chamber of Commerce and numerous different business owners that have, you know, we could give a quantitative number to that.
I don't know if this, you know, I mean, if it's readily accessible, it applies, you know, there is a, this takes a lot of room and it only counts for a small percentage, but a small percentage of the community as a whole, that'd be great, but we don't, we don't need to put out a poll.
My little subcommittee met, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to take over the frickin' meeting again, I just cannot help myself. We really tried to hit on the fact that Anchorage is experiencing a homeless crisis, and that the people that are the most disenfranchised in Gerwood are this group of folks that are the workforce housing people that work in the tourism and the food industry and all that here in Gerwood, and the ones that are least represented, and that are, in many ways, need to really have their voices heard. And again, we've been really lucky, Brooke's been able to make it to at least two of the, both the last two meetings, but a lot of time, you work when we meet, and that's the case for a lot of these people. So I have a lot of respect for what you're saying, but I do think that this is exactly what I think will get traction with the investment.
I guess I must say, remove it, you know, I think, I think it's very important. And I just didn't know if we can build a bond, if we have it there yet.
Betsy, and then Brooke, if she has anything to say. Go ahead, Betsy.
Betsy, your hand is up, please.
I know HLP and I would assume Connie as well, because they're public documents. Quite a variety and a large number of people in town wrote letters to the HLP and explained, you know, I work in business, I rent a building, my employees to live in, or all my employees live in Anchorage because they can't find anywhere to rent here. And there was a stack of at least 25 that fell off, that were sort of, you know, they weren't in numbers, but they were explaining the situation from the point of view of business owners mostly.
I think, I think as well, right, like I say, it's the recommended, yeah, you can get them over here, don't delay the process.
Betsy, to clarify, were you saying that all those letters were also sent to the assembly members?
I don't know if they were sent to these, though.
HLP Advisory Commission.
They were sent to the HLP Advisory Commission, and they were public documents that were like in meeting packets. I'm sure they're available.
Well, if this is, if this is also, the audience is to the assembly, they wouldn't have read all 25 of those letters, presumably, but they would know that it's an issue, for sure. The only other thing I was caught on, on the second paragraph, beginning in February is obviously this year, and it's been six months, so it's pretty soon after their Jan, sorry, late December announcement to the community. But I don't have verbiage for that at this moment, but otherwise, it's totally fine. And then you did say it's overburdened social?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I do want to look at that one sentence, to not start a sentence with you, I O U, but I'll do that when I'm not talking. And the only other thing I overheard with the percentage edit from Betsy, so Brooke, this question is to you, when you questioned people on that survey, they were clicking or saying, I was homeless while I was in Gerwood, not while I was in Anchorage or in Colorado or North Dakota or something like that. So it would be prudent to keep the word, or unless you say at the beginning, an informal survey somewhere while they lived in Gerwood, even though it says Gerwood renters. They could say they're homeless at, when they were a kid, and now they're an adult living in Gerwood.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We could, I mean, that could be changed to experiencing homelessness while living in Gerwood.
Yeah, okay.
That's good.
I'm done talking about that. Any other comments from the board on, in those first? We can go down farther.
Well, I like all the information in the survey, and I don't really have a problem with keeping it all. It might be a little bit more impactful if we just had three or four points rather than all of them. But I, I'm not strongly thinking about that. The other thing I'd suggest is if, in the long paragraph of that section, so within the four bullet points, we've used the term workforce and mid-income housing. I would recommend we use that here for the first bullet point, increase the supply of workforce and mid-income housing. And then the last one isn't, it's not quite decrease the amount of, or the number of short-term rentals, it's kind of something about not having them just be short-term rentals. But I'm not quite sure what the right term is, though. I think, I mean, we can't, by adding health, we can't decrease the number of short-term rentals. We'd have to take away the testing ones. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's good. The other thing I was going to suggest, that this is, this is a low priority suggestion, is if they were labeled in some way as goals, then we could refer back to them in the specific asks later down, you know, to achieve goal A or whatever.
And to follow that comment from Mike, there's number one and number two in both sections. You know, there's two segments of this, the binding part and then the beginning. Those, adding letters like A, B, C would be a good idea. They're referenced later in the game.
So we want to put goals at the beginning of the after leave listening?
Yeah, maybe, I mean, you could even just have goals after, as a section after, you know, introduction and another section, just title goals and just label A to D. That'd be a simple way of doing it.
About that, Nico?
Is label A for D?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then goals and the goals, so it's like the next section.
I agree.
That is good copy.
Any other comments through the goals? Okay.
Margaret's going to-
Yes, sorry, Margaret, please.
So I think I'm tracking more to where Guy was going, and I think that maybe Nico and I can work on some language that just outlines the various times that the community has met and discussed this. And maybe we can say how many people roughly attended each of, so the 20-some-odd letters that were received and public meetings held through the Board of Supervisors, through Gerwood Inc., through Chamber, like whatever, we'll have to just regather that information. But I think we can put that into this, in, it'll add, it'll add words to the sentence, but I think it will show the volume of interest.
Yes, Emma.
I agree with that, and I didn't want to add more to it, since I had come in late to the previous meeting. But I think if, if you believe that can be worked in, Margaret, I think to identify school, like the school staff, the fire, fire staff, and maybe just some of those key, you know, social services, workforce, again, not, not to make that a longer in the sentence, but just to target, you know what I'm getting at?
Essential, essential force.
Thank you.
So we, we're not going to wordsmith that right now, if you guys don't mind, but well, we're crafting that in. And just to clarify, this letter will actually be coming from the Walton Hills Housing Advisory Committee, correct? Not from the Board of Supervisors. Not from the Board of Supervisors.
I think we're covering that on two. Our second generator is just to outline what happened from that one. Clarify.
Okay, yes, sir.
If you do the homework, it's part of every community defined workforce housing differently. We have not defined workforce housing. I haven't seen the reason. Looking at that question, I'd suggest that you struggle with that. So, no.
I agree. It's always a, it's an easy term to throw around. Today I was actually listening to Sandra Makowski at the Infrastructure Symposium. And it was interesting because she started in her address discussing Alaska's lack of infrastructure. So she said, we want to help make these plans happen. Then she said,
What was this?
Makowski. Then she said, we realized that each one of these infrastructure projects requires workforce. And my ears perked up because she started using the term workforce. And so there she was throwing it around. And I think we can't help ourselves because there are so many different sectors. So workforce doesn't mean one income level. And so this is going to come to I don't, I don't know that defining it is helpful, but I think by having a broad understanding of Gerwood's essential services. But as Makowski spoke to the need for workforce, she said, we are also funding, and I know this is a side note, but she said, we are also funding workforce housing, childcare. And so that term, we're using it for a wide section of our care in Gerwood, but I also think that's just happening at large.
Yeah, but again, communities who have struggled with this have hinted to positive thinking, some sort of values where that fits. And just what you do is you look at who are the people that want it, whether it's their income, separate name, file, staples to work. But that's important from a development standpoint. You have an idea, what you have to provide at the cost, where you can make it for a budget.
Thank you for that. Nico, do you have one or Brooks?
I was just going to say, we've gone round and round and round. I'm trying to pin this down. From using the very law guidelines of an individual's housing is affordable to their personal budget. It takes approximately 30% of the income to pay for it. That's widely accepted. And so do we look at a range based on our community and say, well, you're a service worker grossing 20 an hour all the way up to our end of the clinic? Is that the income bracket that we're going to target and say that's the spectrum we're trying to build for? Or do we not like those numbers? And so we've gone round and round and round and we just kind of left it at workforce.
And Brooks?
Yeah, my perspective on that is that this is going to be a very good conversation. But what we want, we want that conversation to take place in our we're not hitting HLE, forcing my investments down to what does that mean? Because what we want to do, if somebody's asked, is we want to create the ability within Gerwood create a housing authority that will, and that will work on, what does workforce, what does workforce housing mean to us? And so the fact that it might not be completely worked out now, there's a lot of reason to let HLE and CY force it to be defined or say, well, we can't bust, we'll deal with it. Because we're asking for land and money and money is intended to create a structure of that role. Figure that stuff out. Within a fair amount of short time.
Yeah, I was just going to make a very quick point. I believe the RFP response from CY Investment used the phrase workforce housing within it. So questions on both sides about exactly what it means. It wasn't defined while in that time.
Jennifer has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm not exactly on topic. So if we're still talking about defining workforce housing, it can wait.
Okay, maybe just hang on, Jennifer. Erin?
I was just going to comment that at some point when there is the discussion of the workforce housing, there are more two different workforce housing, workforce housing for people to buy workforce housing, those are two different.
Right. And Mr. Davids? Davids, your comment of the, the community defines the need first and then that number. So it could be a huge bracket, like Nico was gesturing, that maybe we define. Pardon?
Changes.
And it changes, right? So it could evolve. Anything else on that topic? Or Jennifer, you can always go back. Jennifer, go ahead.
Sorry, Brianna, I'm actually circling back to just, I just, I, I got a little bit, I know we're going to wordsmith the introduction later. I got a little bit scrambled on what we're actually saying. And I just wanted to reiterate or reinforce Guy's point about it would be great if we could also include the feedback we've gotten from employers so that we show that this is a broad spectrum of the community that's concerned about it. Anyway, I thought it was a good point and I wasn't sure if it might have gotten lost.
Thank you. And I think I interpreted Margaret's statement as including some of that.
We'll get there.
Okay. Okay. If there's any other comments, we can move on to the beginning, the, the end of the first section. Create accountability to the RFP and the RFP response, insert, comment, insert language from the RFP and RFP responses, binding commitment. And why these two? And then number one, I had a question. It says, RFP page eight, but is that a PDF too? Because everything's been really consistent with saying what page it's on on the PDF. But maybe there was no PDF of the master plan. I think there was. So insert after page eight, just what it is on the PDF, if you keep referring to each one.
I will check up when I was copying.
Yeah.
I think that if the RFP is page numbered in an obvious way, the RFP response has a set of cover sheets. So there's a mismatch between the number in the document and the number.
I see. Okay. Anyone has comments on number one or two? Guy?
I think you have a question, I think. So the, and I was at your last meeting, this one that I wasn't here when I think you built this into here. So the RFP, it's gone in the past. And the response is actually done too, so. Can we go back and change this? Is that what we, is handling or, you know, I, I'm just, I think.
It, it's not a section heading should be clear. It's not asking to change the RFP or the RFP response. It's asking to insert into development agreement. Language from there. So much reporting that is that, yeah, it's not clear. Yeah. Okay. So what you're saying. Yeah.
Doesn't think back to one. I don't think we can change that. I may notice all of it.
That's a good point. Can you read that back to us once you've got it?
So it's create accountability to the RFP and RFP response, insert language into the development agreement from the RFP and RFP response as a binding.
Anything else on number one or two?
What's that actually mean in terms of, I'm just trying to think of the mechanics of that. I mean, what does, is the development agreement the right place to get any, get numbers? The, you know, about to get housing, workforce housing, market rate housing, et cetera. Or is that a should we present the development agreement for silence? Just to get that validation.
The way that words, the way that's worded is better, at least. How I would be content with specifying the development agreement that this degree of detail will be included in the master plan, right? So if you look at number 10 and it says, the CY master plan will do such and such and such. So right now, development agreement references, I think, CY master plan.
Does that make sense?
It would be relatively easy to modify the development agreement and the master plan, show indicate.
Right. So through the master plan. Okay. Thanks for clarifying it. And then what does, what does consultation actually mean? Is that, is that actionable in point number three? I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what gain we're putting in there or what we lose by not having it.
Asking them to keep talking to us.
That's fair.
Make like an easy thing.
Again, I'm not sure it's actually in the development agreement, but again, that doesn't matter as long as there's some commitment to it.
And both number one and number two begin with the master plan. That's the first time it's been mentioned. But I don't know that it needs to be in the title above it. But also maybe Margaret already fixed it or you did, Nico, shall identify. The T looks like an F, but I looked for it there. Oh, identify. Okay, good. I guess if, if complications in there twice on number three, one word could be different than consultation. At the statistic.
Requirements for consultation. Use the first one.
Yes, that's shorter and it'd be online. Anything else on the first section?
Is point three supposed to be also have the land trust is B. Do you guys also want land use committee? Is that what that was meant to be?
So Gerwood Community Land Trust is included, not land use committee. Land trust is included specifically because HLE is working with them on very similar project. And they may or may not be in the sheet that someone's asked below.
I'm going to add land use committee just because of the format. I mean, if you got the trails, you can imagine Gerwood typically presentations go land use committee and then G box for any land issues.
Any comments on the board about that?
Makes sense. I don't think there's a need to, but I mean, it makes sense. There's no reason why we shouldn't.
Right. For them, it's just another meeting that they may or may not have time for. Like laundry list meetings. But there's not a specific right now. It's just add them. Okay. I'll go to the second section. One of yous explain the title, please. Backup. Backup.
In copying and pasting from working documents, we asked for the binding commitments above. And so really that could probably use a better title.
What about substantiating binding commitment provision?
We just say recommended revisions to the development?
That sounds better.
Last word. Because prior to that is ask to bind it, have a binding. Oh, I think I had a question at the end of number one. Within five years of what? Like when they bought it or programmed or do we need to say that?
Brooks, are we taking upon disposal or five years prime?
It would be five years upon transfer of the property out from MOA to
entity we selected.
So the idea is that some of the compensation to an MOA or a selling department be real estate. And then the MOA would then commit to transfer their real estate to a locally controlled And so it would be when the MOA transferred it to the
Within five years of MOA transfer to a designated nonprofit entity. MI, from the MI. That sounds better?
Guy?
So it takes 50% of estimated value of the plot of the land. So it's not, it isn't 50% of the land or plot that's actual value that will be awarded to somebody or like what is the, it's not land that it starts taking, right? Is that what you're saying? Is the value of the land that's
Based on the present. The estate that came up. So the concept is, we were trying to say rather than 15% of the land, figure out what the value of the whole area is. And the lobs that equals 15% of value transferred as the land. I don't think it's clear either exactly what we're asking, but the concept was letting it be transferred.
That's kind of what I thought it meant. It actually says instead of cash compensation, start with, but to another question too, because down here it says initial investment of the app related. So I don't know if that's a true statement, is that cash compensation? I mean, I trust you. If this is what you came up with, I just had a hard time understanding, so. Estimated value, that's the four year before it now. I can wrap that.
So I think items one and two should deal with together rather than separately. At least the, the idea I'm very keen on is to use some combination of actual land and restrictions on use of the land, which results in a reduction in the market, the market value together in compensation. So, so take a very concrete example. If it was 15%, then we're really saying on one extreme, we could take 15% of the land. At the other extreme, we could put, you know, deep restrictions, which would result in a 20% decrease in value on 60% of the land. So there's probably some operation point between those two. I think those two points need to sort of go together and then find somewhere between those.
I think we saw them as a combination of
Yeah. So we would probably prephrase that way so it's clear. It's because the land transfer is, you know, you're taking the whole value of the land and moving it over. And we're also talking about, you know, that's a medium to long-term thing. I mean, that's not the result in housing for, you know, best case, three or four years, possibly five, five or six, et cetera. But that's not an immediate solution, whereas the restricting the, restricting something to a primary residence at least But that's not an immediate solution, whereas the restricting the, restricting something to a primary residence at least increases the either the number of rental housing or the amount of occupied housing. Probably a much shorter timescale. So by putting it, by effectively combining those two, and we'll push on short term rental as something else, that's a separate issue. But by combining those two, I think we create kind of a sliding scale between those points in this negotiation space. As it's written as well, the other question is, if we say half, half the profit. Which is, and we're saying basically 15% of the land, and we're kind of making the assumption that there's a, you know, 3% of the gross profit. Which I doubt is probably true. And definitely depending how you do accounting, someone can make sure that isn't true. So I'm not sure about that number.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, and I mean, because we're talking about, you know, we're saying basically to take half of the, well, in fact, if you look at all six, there's a slice coming off the top. For transfer to set up, you know, house authority, et cetera. And then if the remainder, there's a, an amount which is obvious to quote, they're saying that actually equate 15% of the value. So I think this is a, when you put the whole thing together, this doesn't really work. And if the number turns out to be close to, you know, 5%, then maybe getting 5% of the land isn't very valid. Whereas getting 25%, you know, deed restriction might be valid. So that's why, again, I think if we tie these two things together and use some combination of the two, it gives negotiation.
Why can't we just say a combination of one and two?
Yeah, except I think we take out the short term rental issue from item two.
Yes. And can we just say then that number one's going to be restructuring the profit share through a combination of?
Yeah.
And then have just the first part of number two be and deed restrictions?
Yeah, it's primary place of residence, suit two A.
Primary place of residence. And then leave it at that for now.
I like that.
I think making it shorter, one of the goals we had here is to try and keep this down to just a couple, two or three pages. Realizing that I think what Guy and Margaret brought up is important.
I would need that again to describe it.
So we would take basically the deed restriction in two A. So deed restriction to big property as primary place of residence would go into item number one. And we would be, we would use a combination of the land transfer and.
So we just say restructure HLV profit sharing.
Yes.
Through a combination of cash compensation. And.
Cash compensation.
No, it would be, the way I understood it was we would be combining item one and item two A. So it would be a combination of those two, and then we keep the cash compensation as a separate issue on right.
Okay, it would be instead of taking the estimated value of platid area, lots phase one and phase.
I think we can leave that language in, but we would be talking about, it would be a combination of land transfer or deed restrictions. The primary place of residence.
Just say that, let me simplify.
Yes.
It gives us some broader strokes to try and hit traction with too.
Let me take a stab at it.
While you do that, Jennifer had her hand up, if you have something, Jennifer, go ahead.
Thank you, Brianna, I was just, I think the answer is already coming, I was just hoping for some clarification, so that's perfect.
Okay.
I didn't say when you volunteered to help with that.
It'd be great. Would three include nightly rentals? Would that bump it down?
Well, we, we kind of have to be like hanging by itself.
Okay, so restructure HLV profit sharing for a combination of land transferred. Phase one and two to be needed to a specified Gergo non-profit entity for community purpose of constructing inclusionary housing. And or deed restrictions on phase one and two lots.
As primary.
To use the property as primary.
I would say and, and not include or, that's what I was.
Yes.
And, got it.
And I think for clarity, you might want to put the deed restriction first because that first phrase selection is so long.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, I'm going to read it again. Deed restrictions on phase one and two lots, use of property as primary places of residence. And restructure HLV profit sharing for a combination of land transferred from phase one and two to be needed to a specified Gergo non-profit entity for the community purpose of constructing inclusionary housing.
Can you say for the purpose? Should I need to say community?
Purpose.
Mike, did you have one?
Yeah, that's not quite what, that's not quite where I was going. So if we start with restructuring profit share, the, the concept was instead of taking a bunch of cash going to HLV. It's a combination of deeds which effectively reduce marketable value. So that becomes part of the compensation package. The deed restrictions become part of the compensation package and the land transfer. So the, that, you know, restructuring of the profit share becomes a controlling phrase for both of the, both of the options. That makes sense.
Restructuring the profit share.
Yeah, so the profit, the profit come, the profit is expressed in terms of deed restrictions on some of the property and land transfer.
Restructure HLV profit sharing through deed restrictions.
For a combination of deed restriction down, land transfer, yeah.
And at the end, do we need to say anything about the non-profit entity or we leave that out for now? And then you could have a separate sentence that just says the land transfer would be to a specified Gergo non-profits.
I think we got the concept, if we haven't got the five numbers.
What, what I've got is restructure HLV profit sharing through a combination of deed restrictions on phase one and two lots to use of property as primary places of residence. And land transfer that are from phase one and two to be needed to a specified Gergo non-profit entity. For the purposes of monthly inclusionary housing. We have eliminated any five year stipulation. Give that back.
It's in there, just.
Mr. Daniels.
So we include it in there so that there was, one of the things we talked about that Brooks helped us to understand is that we need to have our, hold ourselves accountable. And we're going to get things done in a certain period of time because there's urgency to all of this. So that's the reason that's in there.
Margaret?
I think that Rick mentioned earlier, you know, that the future is unforeseeable. I think that painting ourselves into a corner on the number of years could be difficult, we don't. So if there is a time that gets stated there, maybe it should match the timeline that we haven't stated yet in a later paragraph. Having to do with the specified number of units in a set period of time under number four and hold us all accountable to the same kind of timeline. Because we would no doubt all be coming across some of the same potential barriers to construction.
Okay, thank you, Margaret, Leni?
Just an additional thing is if this is kind of something that we're putting before, then they could always come back with asking us to do that versus us volunteering out now. Nobody wants to come of it.
So leaving out the five years?
Putting a specified period of time.
Well, it could be coming up in number four if we decided.
I'd recommend we leave out, we leave the five years, but this isn't the final signed agreement, this is the general principle, so we can put details going forward.
Right, thanks Nico for doing all those. Number three. I think I was going to ask for clarification on disposal of land. Yes, Nico?
He did not come back to deal with the question about.
Yeah, can we move that, can we discuss that later?
I'm just going to make it known, so.
Keep it bold or something. And then, so I was just going to ask about which land, if it could be more specific. Talking about visual pieces or, oh, you mean the giant disposal land?
Yes.
Initial or whatever.
It would be the transfer, because Brooks described the transfer of land from the municipality to CY investments, right?
Okay.
No, from municipality to the, to the nonprofit.
Okay.
Confused about the question, sorry, which question?
Oh, number three.
You're asking on number three.
Yes, the disposal of land, so which, which disposal or is there only one disposal? That's.
It would be disposal of land from the municipality of Anchorage to the designated nonprofit entity housing. No.
So the start of number three upon the disposal of land to CY investments. I believe that land disposal only happens once. Hence, the whole track.
Margaret has it and.
No, I just think there was an edit in the first meeting that you guys looking at the page in front of you will see has been modified. And I think that some of your question will be answered if you're both looking at the same.
Yeah.
We flipped the clause there in the first meeting so that it's more clear, an initial investment of $500,000 should be designated by HLV. And so it cleaned up the language because we have a teacher in the.
Right, never mind, okay, Jennifer's hands up and then anyone else?
Thank you, Brianna, but once again, my question is now about, I just needed a little bit of clarification about the item before, so we can finish talking about this one first, if you want.
Okay, Mike, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I just recommend that we, there's a lot of detail in here that's somewhat speculative. So I think we, you know, treated incumbent funds and then something for the use of a good housing entity. I wouldn't put all that detail in about the US, GBSA, et cetera. I think that's just too much, and it's not clear what structure would be in the future. So we can make that vague.
So are we saying inclusionary housing is better to the Gergo Valley Service Area?
Yeah, so there, yeah, that's right, so so we treated incumbent funds subject to a few, subject to future use. To buy an entity to implement inclusionary housing structures within the Gergo Valley Service Area, period. And if you want to include the, the rest of that sentence about similar to housing authorities, that's fine. But the, I don't think it makes sense to go into quite as much detail, it's not clear that GBOS would be the body. We don't have that power at the moment, although we may seek it, we haven't got it.
And then that next sentence talks about the time period. Jennifer, is your hand up for this one or is it just to remind me?
No, it's, I just didn't take it down.
That's okay, that's okay, I can remember.
That's what I'm doing all the time.
Use of funds, after which any remaining funds shall be returned.
So a question while I'm trying to get this, so my friend, he's just wanting to strike the language subject to future appropriation by GBOS.
To support creation and operation of management body or contracting with the system, most of that. So incumbent funds to be used to implement inclusionary housing strategy within the Gergo Valley Service Area. We can't say, we can't, it's pre, it's too early to say who would get it. And if we do try and say who would get it, then we're kind of potentially causing a problem to ourselves because that isn't a future mechanism, it effectively goes away.
Crystal?
So that, that language that starts at to support creation is an exact copy paste from the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan.
I think that's why we.
So like, I guess I would understand like because GBSA doesn't have housing powers, that it would make sense to strike the future appropriation by them. But I still think like to support creation and operation of a management body or contract with an existing entity to implement inclusionary housing strategy within the Gergo Valley Service Area. Is very much applicable to this, and we could strike in the manner similar to housing authorities and others are.
I'd like to have it as simple as possible, but not so it doesn't tie our hands too. So that's fine, if that's, the creation operation is also fine, I, I personally have simpler language, I, I don't care that much.
I think we really, we were hitting on, we came up with this language after Adam had spoken at the meeting to say the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan is controlling document. So we wanted to continue to include that in the document to say, you know, this is exactly what you said is going to be the ruling document. We're using this verbatim from it.
Okay, so in that case, yeah, I, so in that case, maybe the easiest thing to do is just strike out the language that says subject to future appropriation by good or bad supervisors. And then maybe take out that last sentence of the timescale. Thanks, Crystal.
Yeah, thank you all. Hopefully, Nico, let's make and type at the same time.
So you also said strike the sentence from the time period.
Yes.
It would be consistent.
And we could put it in at the end. That was, my next question was going to be about that time period, if that was different. Okay, Jennifer, we'll go back to yours above.
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor anything at all, because, but I just want to make absolutely clear, I understand that we're saying for the first points that we are okay with either deed restriction, that we would be okay with either deed restriction or land compensation, but possibly not both. So we could end up with some portion of deed restriction, but no buildable land, am I understanding that correctly?
Well.
Just based on our ask, I just, I get that this is all an ask, but am I understanding that ask?
Okay, thank you, I think it was changed to and, but correct me if I'm wrong, we, it's nodding heads here, so it's and.
It's just not visible.
Yeah.
Okay, so we didn't do and or we did and?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, nope, that's perfect, thanks.
Great. Okay, number four then, deadline for construction of housing. Mike?
This is really tricky because the, the other, the whole purpose of the project, the purpose of the land transfer is to produce housing. And the development agreement isn't about producing housing, it's doing plant sale. So HLV have already said, we, they've already basically said by doing that, we've got no, we don't want any control over whether there's housing or not. We don't care if there's housing or not, as long as there's lands that's sold, which could have, that's enough. And we're, what we're basically saying here. And we're, what we're basically saying here is that isn't enough. That wasn't the purpose. That wasn't the objective. The objective was to have housing. I'm not sure, I don't understand what the right mechanism is for, you know, completing that loop and making sure we get housing out of there. It seems somewhat unfair or unreasonable that that obligation falls onto individual purchasers. And I don't understand that, we have people much better about contracts, maybe suggesting. So I'm not sure if this is, I'm not sure what we're really asking is HLB to sort of find a solution for how they actually, what they said they were going to do, which is produce housing. I don't know if it's up to us to find the foreproof method of doing that. We're asking for, we're asking them to meet what they, to do what they said they were going to do. Rather than us taking the mechanism.
Don't we still need to make the ask?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What we're asking is for, maybe this isn't the change in the development agreement. Maybe this is a, HLB have to close that gap, have to, have to produce a mechanism, which may not be in the development agreement, I don't know. But I don't think this particular case, we can be prescriptive about how it's done. We just have to be forceful about saying this has to be done. For this, what's all this housing, then you've got contract, it doesn't produce housing. Sounds like it's a mission use.
So how are we going to decide?
Central part. Anyone on the committee have an idea? Number four there, Emma's. It could just be striking from what Mike suggested. It could be striking the whole beginning part, because that's all describing how to. But he's still on the title, right? No? Is that the goal?
Why, I'm trying, see if I can be clearer about what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is, I don't think we should be specifying how it's done, whether it's deed restriction or something else. I think what we need to do is just make it, there has to be a mechanism for producing housing in a reasonable time scale. And HLB created this problem by not, by basically transferring land to somebody else who's doing land development and not putting any requirements in there that were housing. So they have to come up with a solution here. We can help you, but we shouldn't be dictating what, we shouldn't be even sort of proposing a mechanism yet, I don't think. I don't think we have one that's more.
So it should, should say develop a mechanism for ensuring specified number of housing units are built in a prescribed period of time?
Yeah, some, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it probably should be a number of houses.
But that would get to the heart of what you're saying.
Yes.
Same.
And I get it.
Bridges earlier that was edited. Erin?
I mean, did you want to put in this, Mike, you're talking about HLB and you want to specify HLB or is this?
I think it's a good idea to specify.
We could specify, because HLB are the, are the party that has that, should have that responsibility. And if they, if they come up with a solution which is changing the development agreement, then that's the path. But I don't think we're, we're asking for a, for a particular outcome, not. It's not our responsibility to come up with a mechanism. We're just pointing out that HLB needs to do this.
Mr. Davidich, did you have? Did you have your hand up? No. Okay, I thought you were gesturing to. Okay. Yes, Nico?
So just make it simple, HLB shall create a reasonable mechanism for construction of housing units in a set period of time.
Or requirement, but yeah.
Define reasonable, or is that?
I heard the word reasonable, but I'm saying.
Yeah, we decided, we don't know how many, we don't know how many, you know, phase one and two, we don't know how the actual housing units are being proposed. We haven't seen that. It was in the RFP, which we had to sort of, so until we get those numbers, it's hard to know.
So what's the actual phrase we're doing?
HLB shall create a mechanism for, now that doesn't sound right. HLB shall create a mechanism for construction of housing units in a set period of time. A requirement for.
Yeah, I think of requirement.
And you said, I think you wanted to keep specified number of. We don't know that number, but we'd like to know that number. Switched around housing units instead of units of housing. And then that's like Brooke said, brought to the table of set period of time, discussed.
Just so we've got a record, it's somewhat, I mean, it's probably going to be something like, you know, 30% of housing units within, you know, five, six years, something like that. That's, that's the sort of area that I would expect it to be. But we don't have what those numbers are yet, until item number five is addressed.
Anything else? Thanks, Nico. Anything else on number four in the room or online? Okay, number five, increase transparency. Great setting. Continue dialogue with GPOS or designated entity. And the, the unredacted copy of the Pomeroy CY RFP. That if you are using that consistent title, it's either that name that you have or it's the one that we used earlier. And sign development agreement. And initial project budget is separate, right?
The initial project budget is required in current development agreement.
Okay.
So this was a Dave Hamry point that was supposed to see that.
Yes, Emma?
That couldn't be more clear by his saying, and an initial project budget as required in the signed document. Just so that you see the point before you get to the citation.
And keeps the required and signed development above that?
Yeah, just that's out here in the last page.
Yes, Guy?
Dave also mentioned, she kind of mentioned there's something about following plans during an earlier meeting. That's something I want to add as well, it sounded like a good idea.
Yeah, I think he was talking about the other half of the project, yeah. I think we should definitely ask to at least see the plan so that we know what's going to be developed, I guess. We don't know really anything about that project. There hasn't been a lot of transparency either.
Jennifer?
Just wanted to ask if we might want a more specific ask about the dialogue. And in particular, if we want to ask for the creation of a calendar or dialogue structure, just so we have some expectation of when we get updates.
Thank you. Suggestions, oh yeah, Betsy, sorry?
Dave was initially referring to it as, when our RFP response came out. There were three players in the, in their proposal. CY Investments, Seth Anderson, and Pomeroy. And to this point, even after asking HLB and asking Cadios Maras on a number of occasions, what's going on with that threesome, which is now one? And what that means and how that happened and this Pomeroy is still a player or a player will be in their development that has never been clarified. And his point was that it should be clarified because that's no longer their proposal.
Jennifer?
Sorry, legacy hand.
No worries. Guy?
Then maybe all of this detail doesn't have to go into this, you know, I think your point is increase transparency. When you guys meet with them on the 16th, make sure you ask these questions, they're both in writing, but there are a lot of questions that should be asked.
Sam?
Okay, maybe we should start a subcommittee that was responsible for making those questions that we asked.
So I think it's, I mean, there isn't any development agreement except the one with CY Investments. And what I've heard consistently is this, this project, the Hope Hills project, doesn't involve other partners. It's between HLB and CY Investments. So we can ask these questions about history, I don't think they're relevant to the future, they're not particularly relevant to the future. So I would just not have it a part of this letter at all. There probably is another proposal that will come along on the other side of the, about the other side of the stream, creek, sorry. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see information about that, but that's a separate development, it's named after the title.
Impacts. Erin?
Just to Betsy and Dave's point, I think it was more curiosity of our RFP. Accepted or aborted supposedly because these three entities were involved. It was my understanding. So I get the development, I mean, just with CY, but we got some approval with the treaty. It would just be crazy now, I could guess, but I would like to know. Why? And he's neither here nor there, but there was an agreement, they got accepted because of that. And then the development agreement says CY Investments doing business as, I think, Gerber Valley or some Gerber something. But it just elaborates that's all they, Cadios Maras or?
Sam?
We're down into the weeds. When we meet with them, we will ask questions. But the idea here, in all due respect, is that we join in a cooperative effort to move the ball forward, to get some agreement on issues. And yeah, we can ask for the budget, it doesn't have to be in the letter. Right? Doesn't have to be there. We can have our list of questions, like what Brooks is talking about, and we want to cover them during the course of the negotiation process. But I used to be a union rep for the Muni, for the, for the mid-level management. When you sat down and negotiated with the other sign, you may have a script to start with, but it, pretty soon, it's going to be just a matter of sitting down there and hitting all the different points you want to consider and seeing whether they'll get agreement and we can look forward to them or not. And I just have concerns about getting, drilling down too hard in this. And I, you know, whether or not it's included in the letter, it's stuff that needs to be spoken to at some point probably, while trying to maintain that spirit of cooperativeness and not saying, well, you should have done that, you should have done this. That's not going to get us anywhere. It's just not.
Thank you.
Not in my deal. That's what I have to say.
Any other comments on number five? I just skimmed it again. It sounds like a fragment more than a sentence, but I'm sure you could word it. So it has beginning, middle, and end. It's like a list right now.
Well, just go back to Jennifer's point about more specificity in what dialogue means.
Right, that's true. Thank you.
I'd like to return outreach calendar. Somebody moved that term. Outreach structure.
Calendar or structure both works. In that dialogue is communication, so we take out communication. I guess it's referencing back up to the consultation requirements that they will discuss with you at the meeting. I'm indifferent on the verbiage for that. So if you have one, Emma, that's good. Jennifer, you have one?
Not necessarily. I just want to make sure we ask for something specific.
The consultation and the transparency could be brought up both times, so they are asked for a specific communication calendar.
Yes, please.
Go to number six. Require plating of more than blank family lots, multifamily lots include in the design. I'm reading what is in front of me, not on the board, so.
So I can change?
Yeah.
I think we came up with a pretty good change. What does it say now? I can't.
Increase density and/or increase number of multifamily lots in phases one and two.
Safe and simple.
Oh yeah, that's really real great, yeah, okay.
Again, it's, it's hard to remember, well, we don't have an absolute number in the proposal, and it's not clear what the current numbers are, but I think the phase one and two had something like 110, 130, I was going to give, something of that order. And 24 of those were, I think that were three Aplexes being discussed, so that's what about 20% of phase one and two. So that's probably not far off, 20 to 25%.
I think it's one of the areas we'll end up agreeing with, Conny and I, yeah, we're going to be doing that. That's good.
So again, the density or the number of lots gives us some flexibility, so I like that.
Anything else?
We didn't touch the thing about short-term rentals.
Okay, coming back to short-term rentals. Two A. B, sorry, Mr. Davidich?
Oh, I'd just like to introduce that I'm the project manager for this project. I'm also the person that does all the environmental compliance. And I'm leaving my card. One of the best things that happens is if shit happens, you call me. Immediately. Because we can usually solve a problem rather quickly, but if I don't know about it, then it gets bad, so. I will be coming one more year, that one's going to be, because we're in a situation. I got bigger good.
Well, thank you for coming today and saying you'll be back. Or welcome to our online meeting, if you can't make it to Wood.
I don't communicate that well.
All right, not easy. Sam?
Process question. So my understanding at this point, and I, and I, quite frankly, on a national thing, I think we should keep it really general. Because we could, we spent 30 minutes talking about it at the beginning of last meeting, and I don't think it's productive. So that's my two cents on that. But once this is approved, my understanding is that Margaret and Nico are going to come up with insertion into number the introduction part, that we'll speak to the other community, the meetings and the that took place with the community and that sort of thing, trying to embed into there. And then we're going to have a document that will be approved as is, or do we still need to meet again? The board supervisors to approve it? How is that going to happen? Because I want to end up with a working document that we can forward to Rick and Connie and Adam to keep things moving.
Is that on number two for the agenda?
That's the process number two, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to fish on through your agenda.
But it's true.
The national thing, though, I really, really do strongly suggest that we not. The nightly rental thing, though, I really, really do strongly suggest that we not go down some rabbit hole right now. Just keep it general.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree. The, the, it's likely that there will be, I know there's a lot of interest in many parts of municipality now, as well as COVID, for putting in a, an overall municipal-wide regulation for short-term rentals. There, the, the bond-like, person-like, and I think maybe the one that goes forward is to look, is to look at sort of residential use when people live in a house or somebody lives in a house as being a different permit, a different process to when it's purely commercial. So that's probably the path it would go down, which I know is where a lot of the discussion was earlier today. So I would say that, you know, there should be some comment in here about, you know, subject to there being regulations put in elsewhere externally, there should still be limitations on, you know, on the amount of short-term rental within the project. Through de-restriction, de-restriction might have the mechanisms. But then the details to be specified can be specified later.
Unlike you were saying earlier, the goal I heard was limit nightly rental.
Yep.
Be the broad.
And there were several mechanisms proposed in the earlier meeting, standard reasonable, so making it, you know, only an option for where something is a primary residence, make it only an option for owner occupation. They're all fair choices, but I don't think we need to specify that now. And it may well be that that's overtaken. Events, I would, I think it's likely there'll be something municipal-wide within the year, and probably COVID-wide within it.
So Mike, could that be added as an and in?
No, I think, I think that's a separate point.
Okay, separate point still, but great. Okay, yes, Nico.
As broad as deep restrictions on phase one and phase two to limit the use of properties of short-term rentals.
Yeah. Just we better have broad. Yeah.
Because nightly, sure. Yes, thank you. Let's move to number two on the agenda and discuss next steps. Oh, yes, Guy.
I'd like to ask just one quick question. Thank you guys, by the way, for doing this. All the way, we're kind of a process. I guess from my own probably question that, did you guys look at, is there any kind of way of limits, somebody coming up here and gobbling up 100 of these lots? Or do we even need to worry about that? Or is that beyond our scope? You know, did you guys discuss that? And it's not a bad thing, I don't know, but did that come up during your meeting? Can you limit the number of lots to, you know, what if the link comes in and says, here we'll take 100 of these.
I see that might follow there the deed restrictions, or they have to be the primary residence?
I would like to hear if you would take care of that. I mean, if you guys come up with that. If that came up.
And then.
Is that one of the terms we were looking at when we discussed inclusionary housing? Those, those ordinances that have happened in other towns have a percentage of, have a percentage of new development going towards inclusionary housing. So I think when we talk about inclusionary housing strategies, we had that discussion, although I don't think we talked about ourselves as having the ability to limit somebody purchasing that many, but in the mode of what they can and cannot develop.
I'm not even sure if it's fair to that. I was, I was kind of curious.
Mike?
The purpose of these restrictions, I think, or the purpose of this discussion is what we care about is the outcome. What we care about is the housing outcomes. It probably doesn't matter really if one, you know, one contractor or one entity buys 50 lots and comes out with the same thing as if 20 people buy those 50 lots and come out with the same thing. We care about the outcome, the outcome. So, you know, because the people who are buying these may not be the, in any case, there'll be people who'll buy it, build something, and then sell it. So, you know, that's the other thing we have to care about a little bit of the housing, or, you know, the owner, the person who's actually using it, may well be two or three people down the road from the developer. So things that are just in the development agreement, if they're not, it's some other thing like a deed restriction, won't continue with further. So, but ultimately, I don't think it, I know Connie has mentioned things about wanting to, wanting to have many, many different builders to doing it, limiting the numbers, and, you know. That's really, I don't think, I don't think it matters as much to us in terms of what the final outcome is, so.
Emma?
I think Betsy just whispered it in my ear. It's a good point. It's like, we're trying to decrease the allure of the speculative housing, the flipping of homes and, you know, by deed restrictions and other parts of our strategy.
Crystal?
So in the, I attended the presentation at the Anchorage Home Builders Association, I did it, asked at several of you guys. And they did talk about, you know, builders being interested in multiple lots. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea to put a number on what a maximum amount for one entity to purchase to avoid that speculative situation, because I think like the primary, it was, and, and I'll take you back to December when we were told that C Y and H L B were committing to offering up the properties to Gerwood residents first. It's very clearly documented in the public meeting. So if we, and that's not really identified here either, so. But I would say, you know, ultimately, individuals buying them would be my highest priority. The second, secondary would be making sure that builders can't buy it all up, so it's entirely a neighborhood of all one builder. I think that's a really good valid point myself.
And that's the other hand.
Well, one of the deed restrictions that we have been talking about is that it has to be someone's primary residence. And so I think if a speculator comes in and buys 50 lots and buys and builds 50 homes, what the deed restriction is that he has to sell it to someone that'll live in Gerwood, that would be quite a speculative.
Okay, go ahead quickly and.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't Connie then say when it was brought up about the whole Gerwoodians get access first, that she then took that away at maybe the builders meeting because she then said it wasn't legal to do such things? So it was a false bone that she threw on the table?
I think that's something that we can get some clarification on, because it was, it was like, I mean, if I remember the language correctly, it was, it said, she said that they were committed to do that. They were committed to do that. And so I think it's important if it's, to find out if it's legal or not, and then to that, for that to be discussed at a public meeting.
It isn't legal. I'm not an attorney, but I truly do not believe there's any way that she can say she's just going to sell Gerwood residents. And we've had that. I'm, I'm a little frustrated, so I'll shut up.
Okay, thank you, Sam. And I heard her say, I was there and I heard her state, that's a legal question, so I can't say that now. She didn't answer. Yes, sir.
Well, I just pointed out it's normal with the industry for builders to buy five or six lots. But they're looking at the season and the timing of each of those houses. And as a general contractor, you have to have at least five houses in process at some step in order to maintain work for your approvals. So that's a very normal kind of thing. I have not seen in all the years I've been involved in this, anyone coming in buying 50 or 50 lots. There is a gentleman that has a history of doing it that I don't know, not his name, but I don't think he'll be down. But I, I still see that becoming a problem. Somebody can call him a little something.
I just wanted, I mean, you know, we can keep going, I just definitely want to talk about it. I understand enough what it was brought up, so.
Thanks, Guy. Quickly.
I don't think it would hurt to add a just going to say that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll move to number two, which we started talking, so thank you, Sam, for introducing it. Also, Margaret or Mike, would you like to say something for number two?
Yeah, well, to start with, start with this document, I think there've been enough changes in this that it needs to go away, get, you know, a second draft. We have a meeting next, next Wednesday anyway, so we could potentially just bring it back and approve it, if that makes sense, is what we could reasonably like.
I'll try to get you to come this back.
Okay. Love yous.
So add it to the special meeting for Aliyah's interchange? Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments from the board about number two or questions from committee?
So that's the, that's just the, that's just the kind of letter in the negotiation position. Then what happens after that is the interesting question.
Next step.
What I heard earlier was, Sam said that the, his understanding was that the subcommittee goes ahead, negotiates, and comes up with answers, which I think is right. But I, we need to have that explicit discussion, because I don't think we have in that, to that level of detail. So is that what we're, is that the responsibility we're given?
That seems appropriate to me, they're the ones that have been put the time, they've extended it, but I don't want these come back to us or, you know, to the community or whatever.
I'm I'm comfortable with the subcommittee having the meeting on the 21st and then getting the comments back, because maybe they might need to have something else in writing to respond. And then maybe it needs to be. Are you going to say something, Sam? That's it. Go ahead.
So I think that, I agree, I think the, you know, functionally, the subcommittee can, or chairs of the subcommittee, Helen, that's project, can have the, can have discussions and come up with, you know, something that's actionable. And then I think when there's a, when there's a concrete proposal, just be direct to them. Does that work? However, it takes.
That takes, the committee can say, return.
You know,
Yeah, Sam.
My understanding was that we were going to prove this, hopefully get a final draft tonight. That's not going to happen, it'll be next Wednesday. That's great. Then we share it with you guys. I, I would really prefer not to get a written response until we have a chance to meet these face-ones. I think all of us are of an age where we don't love this stuff. And so a plan would be on the 21st. If, you know, Connie had said she would be happy to attend a meeting in person out here in Gerwood through that. And then the next meeting, if we are able to have one, would be in Anchorage.
She'll bring a couple of them there.
And that, and that would be fine. And then we'll go forward from there. And, you know, what I would say about with the board of supervisors inside it is that just as this has been a community meeting the whole time, that would be, I think, the intent. It's that, yes, we, we, all the meetings have to be open to the public. I told Connie that we were going to negotiate as a committee, and we will. But that doesn't mean that the people that are in the rooms can't still speak to it, including the board of supervisors, because whatever we come up with still has to be approved by the board of supervisors. So I mean, that's how I, I see the process going forward. I just want to keep the letter as simple as possible and get the meeting together as soon as possible, because there is some urgency to all of this.
Agreed. Great, Margaret?
So I wasn't able to answer about the timing of that meeting earlier, so it is currently scheduled at 4 o'clock on the 21st.
And you guys are meeting next Wednesday, so one of us needs to be here for that?
It would be good if so, yeah.
What time is that meeting?
Seven.
Seven.
I'm over.
Okay, you're, you're going to come to.
Yep.
Anything else? We have another meeting coming here, and Mike?
I just wanted to say a thank you to, thank you for all the work you've done so far in subcommittee. I think this has been a good, given where we were a few months ago, I think we're in a very, we're in a very productive space at the present.
Thank you, very, very much. I'd entertain moving for June. Okay, Mike, moved. Any objection?
Thank you.
Second.